You know, it's not it.
Mm hmm.
We can stop the meeting.
Hey, everyone. I think we're just having a little technical difficulty, but hopefully you can hear me. And Carl, do you want to say hi? Okay, thanks, Carl. Yeah, I can hear you. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
Okay, I will start the meeting at seven oh three. Call me first. Um, there's a pledge of allegiance. Stands. To the Republic, which it stands. Nation, God. School, liberty and this role.
Bones, February twenty seventh, I know that we.
I have seconds. Carl, I'm. Thanks, Carl.
I have an appointment. Recommendation from the community center that we appoint Amy Chalado to the community center. And I will move that we appoint Amy.
Uh, second.
Vote. I encourage you to vote.
Can you spell her name?
Oh, you do the paper.
Okay.
Okay, we have a request from a lady. Uh, or you want to talk about the thirty mile?
Yeah.
Request.
Oh, my name is Lady Robbins. I'm the executive director of the Thirty Mile River Watershed Association. And I'm here tonight to ask for your support for our building project. You may have seen that um there's now a sign up on the on the garage doors or not doors garage of the uh of a building in the village right near the the corner antique shops as future home of the Thirty Mile River Watershed. So we purchased that building in November. We got the planning board approval to move forward with the project and are planning to do a major renovation of the building to have that be thirty miles feature home in the watershed. In that space, we'll have um our water quality lab, exhibits, a big classroom meeting room, as well as our offices and storage. So it'll be a great um hopefully a great community resource and help to strengthen the organization and um you know, move us forward so that we can do more work protecting all the lakes in town and all across the watershed. So we are in the process of applying for um congressionally directed spending, CBS funds. And we'll be applying to Senator Collins, Senator King, and Congressman Golden's offices, all of those to see if any of the three would be interested in supporting our project. If we do, it'd be pretty significant funding to enable us to complete the whole renovation. So I um I sent over today just a draft of a of a letter of support. Um, I'm not asking for any money from the town, but just just for your um signing the letter to say yes, the town is supportive of this project. So I'm happy to answer. That's that's the quick overview, but if you um if you have any questions, happy to answer any questions.
My support. No, I don't have any problem at all.
Yes, do I?
I don't know if you can hear Carl, but he is on board as well.
I am on board.
Um, it's not not much different than what. Yeah.
That was long to be across the street. The antique building on the corns.
So next to that, so they, yeah, it was a house before. Yeah, so it's been there since eighteen seventy.
Oh. It's almost as long as I've been here.
So I sent you a letter, I sent one that was addressed to um Collins. Collins. So I can, I mean, I can even do it now. I can just draft up. If I had the letterhead in kind of early night, I could just. Yeah. Was that versus or I can give them to you? Yeah, if you send them to me, um, I can put them on letterhead and put our signatures. Okay, any other way to use electronic signatures? Because I think that's lack of the types. Yeah. Little signature. Yeah, okay. Do you want to use electronically? Well, we can. We can get it. Yeah, we'll get it too. Send you. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. I'm excited.
It screws up at least a little bit of our area.
And we will, we are going to start working on it because of course it's a bit federal funding, not so long process, but um, so we'll be doing it in phases and at least get started with the first phase um next month, actually. Oh, exciting. Start working on the building. What's phase? What's phase one? Just out of curiosity. Yeah, we have some foundation work and some jacking and and then we'll be getting just some limited space in there with some running water so that we can get in there with our offices and then once we get more funding, then we'll have have the um the lab and the meeting room and all those those things. And then probably the third phase will be completely renovating the whole building. They're interacting with the rest of the building, expanding the office space. So we hope that this by bringing more visibility to the organization that will it'll be easier for us to grow and we'll be adding staff over the next few years. Okay, congratulations. It has a new subject system. A new, well, new that we've never been used. It's probably about twelve or thirteen years old.
Is it a system or old and tang?
It's a it's a system. Yeah. Yeah, it was installed by the previous owner. Yeah, it would be on one of them here.
Yeah, well, somebody told me it was old and tang, so.
Yeah, I think it maybe was sometimes successful or something before that, but then they didn't ask. Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, I'll send that my way. Yeah, I'll get the letterhead version back to you. Yeah.
Um, okay, we gotta update something we brought back.
Thanks. So I think I sent these to you in advance, but here's a yes, a copy of of the report, and I brought extra copies for the uh folks who are here. You can translate it in the old place. So um, I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly and leave a couple of minutes for questions if there are any. So the everybody knows that there was a vote in November that narrowly defeated a particular proposal to expand broadband in town. Our committee um determined that we still have a mandate from the comprehensive plan to provide universal access to affordable broadband in town. And so we're proceeding along those lines. Uh, that mandate basically addresses two things, infrastructure and uh digital, closing the digital divide. So I'm going to give an update on each one of those things. Uh, on infrastructure, we have a ways to go. Uh, God for incentives track. It has fewer people with a hundred over twenty, which is the FCC standard for internet uh than Kinda that County. Kinda that County has fewer than Maine. Maine has fewer than the rest of New England. So we're lagging behind and we're even doing more poorly than Mississippi, uh, which back in my youth was one of the places we never wanted to compare it to. Um, the state is expected to have another round of grant applications this uh end of the summer. Uh, we don't know what the rules are yet. Uh, we're talking to the uh connectivity authority actually next Monday uh about some of the their methodology for approving grants. Um, consolidating communications will be around town conducting an engineering study probably this week. Uh, maybe the weather is going to get in the way of that, but um uh, as some of you may know, they have an advantage in that they don't have to go through a make ready process, which was about a million dollar piece of the proposal that was defeated in November. Uh, Matrix, uh, who was approved for Fayette provisionally and likely for sure uh is um taking a look at what they might be able to do uh with grant funds to expand into adjacent parts of Mountain Vernon. Uh, that would not require a significant investment from the town. Uh, it would not be a complete uh overbuild for Fiverr, but would be biting off a piece of it. Uh, the committee hasn't really decided whether that's a good idea or not. Uh, but we're going to look at it. Um, and the same thing might be true with Bynell, although that might be a little more complicated because that's a municipally owned network. Um, the federal government uh has about forty billion dollars of additional money that are going to be coming out by the end of the year. And preliminary estimates are that Maine will get about two hundred and fifty million dollars more. Uh, for comparison, the last round of grants from the main connectivity authority had about seventy million dollars allocated for infrastructure. On the digital divide side, that's another area where we've made some good progress. Uh, we've been working, our committee subcommittee is working with aging in place neighbors, driving neighbors in the library. Uh, we've recruited two volunteers to provide basic information technology support. Uh, it's kind of similar to what's been done over the years with tax preparation. In other words, a free service that would be provided at the library. Uh, we applied for a ten thousand dollar grant from the main community foundation uh to implement a program of what's called digital navigation that the digital, uh, the National Digital Equity Center here in Maine, uh, that Susan Pervert runs uh has modeled there with asset. Uh, so if we get that money, we think that would help us get to the point where the uh, we could have a formal program, have a director and and uh be able to apply for a grant when the federal money comes out by the end of the year. Uh, and as I said, I think state and Maine's going to get about a hundred and twenty six million dollars for that uh purpose. And that's that's intended to help people who don't use computers or cell phones to learn how to turn them on, how to send an email, how to get on the internet, how to protect their personal identification and otherwise operate safely in the insider space. Uh, we need more volunteers to provide assistance services which would probably schedule one hour at a time uh at the library. So if anybody in this room uh would like to volunteer, you can let me know or or let the library know. Uh, the last thing is on the on the ARCA fund. So I know there's a question as to what ARCA funds can be used for and and how um there's a discrepancy between the amount that was quoted at the last, uh, well, at a January select board meeting and uh analysis I did in December and gave to the treasurer of thirty seven hundred and thirty seven dollars. So probably I made some mistakes. I'd like to know make a formal request to the treasurer that tell me where this this exhibit is wrong. Do you handle this over there?
I'm sorry, but I made asking them.
Okay, and that's it. If anybody has questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Right. Um, I just was wondering what the second um a hundred seventy thousand?
A hundred and twenty six million.
Hundred twenty.
It's predictable equity and digital inclusion. Yeah, and it's also it's also for, um, I should say this for workforce development. The state economic development organization estimates that there's thirty five hundred job shortage related to infrastructure development. And I think that hundred and twenty six million dollars will be used for that.
Twenty seven hundred.
Excuse me?
There are twenty seven hundred job shortages for people willing to work at retail stores and and most of them. So um, but I was wondering, is that it's to teach people how to turn on computers, protect the data and stuff, but does it include any money to buy computers or to provide hardware?
Good question. There are two programs. There's something called the Affordable Connectivity Program that the FCC uh sponsors that provides access to a subsidy of thirty dollars a month uh for access to broadband. And the main connectivity authorities ru- uh rules for grants require that one of the uh tiers of service offered is priced at thirty dollars a month for uh high speed internet. So as far as access to broadband, uh, people who come through this program would get assistance on how to sign up for free access. As far as equipment is concerned, there's a number of different programs that um provide for either free or subsidized subsidized uh computers. And uh, the National Digital Equity Center is has that program. You can go on their website and you can see what it's all about. I have not paid a lot of attention to that because it's a little bit off in the future.
Good. Um, all of this here, is this going to result in another special town meeting for uh approval?
I don't know.
Okay. Why?
Excuse me?
Why don't you know?
Two hundred and eleven.
It's kind of like, we don't know what to answer.
It's the only thing you would need special time meeting. I'm sorry to cut in, but the only thing you would need special time meeting for us to authorize expenditure funds. If they're not asking for funds.
Mm hmm.
They don't. It's, we are already covered in the comprehensive plan that
Mm hmm, yeah.
That is something to go off and do.
Mm hmm.
But to authorize any funds that would require with town meeting. And I don't think there's
If we have a a recommendation that requires funds, we'll have to go to the town to get approval for the funds, whether it's at a town meeting or a ballot.
Yeah.
If we don't, and some of the options that we're considering don't require account funds, then we won't.
Mm hmm.
And I don't know what we're doing. We our committee spent, I just estimated today about four thousand person hours trying to figure out what to do to implement the comprehensive plan. And we're going to probably spend some couple of hundred more hours to figure out the interior question.
Okay. Um, though you're probably planning on this already, but are you planning a little call for volunteers in the newsletter this month to help with the program at the library? Or, yeah.
And and the 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 idea is that there are people who would make an appointment, go to the library and say, I'm having trouble with my computer or how do I sign up for a subsidized broadband access? Or how do I get a free computer? And and what, how do I turn it on? How do I send an email? Where do I go for help? Uh, it's not going to be the same as a corporate IT help desk that's available twenty four seven uh with with whatever you need to to stay in business, but um it's something that's being done all over the state. And uh, the the basic concept is to close what's called the digital divide. The the idea is that it's really impossible to uh participate in our society without these skills and resources.
My question is to the select board. I know we're trying to um build a a comprehensive plan for digital tech. How about some road that would more low tech than that? Why can't we have some kind of a committee to work on our bridges and roads? That seems to me that it's a little bit more important that people be able to get to their doctors to physically be seen on roads that are a lot better than they are right now. And you know, we've been working on this bridge down here on Blake Hill, which does cover its elderly people and possibly getting to or from them. Now, the other thing that I've got to say about that is we we want to pour a lot more money into digital networking than we do with personal networking. I think we have a long ways to go before we go the other routes versus versus the roads. You know, a lot more important to be able to get people to where they're going than against the, you know, to sit there and talk to the doctor face to face.
Well, I agree. I tried to put in an article last year for hiring an engineer to look at roads. You can't rebuild roads without first looking at the roads. You know, you've got to have a plan. And uh, that was shot down. So what does that mean?
Us. I mean, I don't think people understood that what that problem, what that entailed. Because I noticed one piece of road that got paved last year. It was about maybe three hundred yards, you know, right at the end of the end of the road. And it's one of the least traveled roads that that we have in town. I think it's kind of ridiculous that that happened. Um, I think that money could have been a lot more lost then. Um, and if we had some kind of a committee in town to look at our roads instead of just you know, a million dollars. From, you know, a million dollars at an engineering firm, why don't we get some people together from the town? Do a comprehensive plan on our roads and bridges, and then we put a poll to. To some kind of a, an idea put together towards um getting a. Getting an engineer to come in and then saying, this is what you need to spend to do these roads, so what do you have?
Do you do not have a road committee as it stands now?
No, no, a road commissioner.
Yeah, I don't recommend it now.
That fits well into the comprehensive plan too, if there's multiple kinds of.
But, but when you form this road committee, make sure you get those engineers, the contractors, you want to have a diverse, I mean, you could have two contracts. Contractors that bid one another that do different things, but make sure you have a diverse group of people on there that are going to do the best for the town. Not just get anybody.
We, we need it from two different ends of town, this. This portion of Mount Vernon, the north end of town actually always seems to get more. Than our southern counterparts down in, in uh Wings Mill's area. What, what is stable right now, it was supposed to be done last summer. Was the Wings Mill Road, I'm not the Wings Mill, but that's part of it.
Yeah.
The other reason it didn't get done was because there's a, a large culvert that we were waiting for. It didn't get delivered until the end of the season. It will be done first thing this summer. Uh, that's the worst road we have right now. The next one is the Sadie Dunn Road. That is a toss-up between a part of the Bean Road and the Sadie Dunn Road. Then you can start growing from one road to the next, our dirt roads are in really bad shape, I, right? Well, I totally, I totally agree, but. Here's what I'm saying, I understand he does a great job, I'm not taking anything away from him. But we don't have any kind of committees fighting for these roads and bridges like we do for broadband, and I just think it's a little bit ridiculous. I mean, we're only putting less than three hundred thousand dollars in our construction account each year. And that is not gonna cut it. Three hundred thousand dollars a year is all we put for construction. But we wanted to put a twenty-year bond issue for a four million dollars so people could have broadband, that's what I'm saying, let's put the cat before the horse instead of in front of it.
The ballot initiative was for a million three.
But it's a four million dollar bond, it's over twenty years and we're gonna spend a lot more than that. You know what's gonna happen, and that's what would have happened with roads, you know, you hire an engineer, look at, that's what we did. They brought in an engineer, looked at all the roads, and they refilled the whole town. That's, you know, then you get the benefit for the whole town rather than one road here, one road there, another road here. By the time you get. You, you never get caught up.
Um, I just want to say, I know about the refilled deal, I, and I really, really wouldn't recommend that. What I would recommend is getting on some kind of schedule because you just said three hundred thousand dollars. Out of Manchester, hey, we got three hundred eighty thousand dollars a year for their roads. And their roads are perfect because they put in a plan in every single year, that three hundred thousand dollars debt set. Every single year, and they had that plan, but they've had a road committee, that road committee was. Absolutely not uh fabulous in getting that done, now. They're, I mean, go down any road in Manchester. And it's perfect, and that's because they have that schedule, and it works.
We have fifty-two miles of road, I don't know how many miles of road they have.
Six.
Refill has twenty-six miles of roads.
Yeah, that.
We have a lot of miles of roads. It's, it's, we have. I don't mind, we, if, I'll put the word out for a road committee, and that's just, it's not a problem.
We have to put the guy before the horse.
I think that remains.
I know that. Talking to Scott, they had a road committee years ago, and the. Lee and Scott, and the couple of them all got together, and went over the roads. And told them what they should do, and then the consensus was, well, we may, we can't do that, we're not gonna spend any money, it's not. Why the heck do you want to spend time, you try to tell the town what we should do, even in sections when. They're drawing money, so we're busy contractors, and we took our time to do this, and then we're just like. Well, nice to do that, but I'm not, we're not gonna do that.
I'm not saying that they should be contractors, I'm saying it should be relevance. Take somebody from West Melbourne, take somebody from down, down the corner, take somebody from Sadie Dunn Road, put six or seven people.
But somebody better know, and I'm gonna, you gotta know, this one's engineering, and maybe you gotta know about this in public.
And it's.
I bet that someone said they can't watch.
So someone's gotta know what's going on. Maybe you don't need a boss, and you've got, it makes me vomit too, but you also need people to remember for real TV. You know, everybody's a god, I'm one of the one. What are you looking like?
I think uh you got, you got to start. Um, you know, you mentioned the manpower investment on broadband, it's admirable. Um, and you guys have done a lot, a lot of great work, and I think the same can be done to map out a plan, but. Just need some of the tension, and if, if our roads are that bad, and I agree they are. E- every dime that we go through the budget and we don't spend on it in that fiscal year is a tragedy, so. We should, we should get on it, you know, use the, the committee and the, the select board to start prioritizing, you, use the funds we have and then go from there. I mean, we, we ran, we ran a road blocking plan again here, but that doesn't need our stop trying to, we don't stop trying to figure it out, so. Um, yeah, it could be a great idea, but we can walk and chew gum at the same time, I mean, this is the, is the town of pretty strong people, so. We can, we can, I think, put, put some people together, and there's a lot of smart engineers in this town. Yeah, but you gotta, gotta start, is what I would say. That might be a road for the twenty-one, right?
You were excited on broadband, didn't you?
Well, Cal argues with all they can see, nobody else, they have technical difficulties, they've been working on it. But at least Cal is on.
We're, we're here, we're just not well videoed, hello, whoever's on the phone with Barry.
Um, moving on to Andrew Stargan, we'll tell me communications, um, I signed the contract this week and mailed it on to them. Um, we had a meeting uh next Monday afternoon with Kennebec County. Commissioners, um, Kennebec County is attempting to get in on this P S A business. Uh, it's a little late for us. We, we definitely have, gonna get set up for July first. All the dispatchers are gonna be in on it, and come next year, this time, maybe Kennebec will be a. I'll go to that, you know, Kennebec County one.
Yeah, so probably a year out before they're equipped, yeah.
Okay, so.
To make a copy, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Then, uh, Kina, when you're done with that, it can be put into the uh. Did you say we're all inside, wouldn't you go in?
Yes, I'll get that.
Andrew Stargan is all set up for July first. Jenny got cancer last week for the uh. It's windy here, so. Okay, Beth, there's really a lot of. I apologize for her. I'm not catching that, uh, I had a cataract thing that day, and was not, it was a little loopy. Um, it's gonna be reset for April fourth. I'm looking at the fan to write that down, April fourth at six o'clock. So.
There's one, oh, next one.
April four, that's six o'clock at three thirty. And I will have someone for you.
Thank you.
Um, Spirit America, I'm gonna skip over. Uh, request for budget forms, um, basically gonna skip over that. Um, the audit status, they, they're on that, um, they requested a couple of things from you. And they said they could have it done. The end of next month.
Next month?
Yeah, or this March.
March.
March, yeah, the, the start. So they're pretty well set, okay.
And they have everything with, they, they've sent another round of requests. And we have all that, which includes the fixed assets.
Oh, yeah, I saw your breakdown about the, yeah, the road expenses, yeah.
Money to capitalize angels.
And, Derek, um, you questioned the Mount Vernon Community Partnership. Questionnaire that was sent out, um. Everywhere on there, it says nonprofit governmental, has nothing to do with the town.
And it says private contractor at the top.
Yeah, and it's affordable senior housing. Every, every spot in here says affordable senior housing.
But it says by housing size at the bottom, by household size.
So if it's household size, then it's only two people if it's elderly.
Or one, I mean, it can, one or two.
One or two, but I wouldn't figure it would be five or six, no.
Right.
Yeah, but it's, it's definitely all senior, affordable senior housing. Period. And so those words are be stricken by household size, then one or two individuals.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think that to me is implying like one or, but one or two is that how it's.
I don't have my paper in front of me, I'm trying to remember, um, but I don't, when you, you said it, but it's a. Of household income or size, I believe is what it says on the bottom. You know, this is, this isn't the same thing that I had, mine was the. Explanation of it.
That mentioned five or six. On the.
Based on household size, and then it said eighty percent of median household income. But that's how you, that's how you set up affordable. I just think that this is a little bit misleading with household size because it's either one or two people in a household if you're elderly.
Correct, right.
Um, and the median household income, you know, eighty percent of median household income or what? Oh. I believe it used to be twenty-four thousand, I don't know if that holds true, makes you into the um, already, which. Yeah, I can't remember, but I already know eighty percent of Mount Vernon needed, yeah, I can't remember the figure from Mount Vernon. They use that, they use that same figure for uh. That freeze that we have on our taxes now.
Hmm.
That same, that same wording is used to that too.
Senior target like stabilization.
I think so.
No, there's no, no potential limit on that.
What's that?
No, the stabilization.
Yeah, that's, they're changing it though this year, who are gonna. Proposed law is going to.
It's going to act more like a homestead exemption from here.
Oh, and last, last meeting, I said, at town meetings. The types of votes that are, are ma- made at town meetings. The first one is a vote, a, a voice vote, and if that's not clear, it's a hand vote. And the next one is a standing vote. I don't remember that. Then there's the division of house, separate them, and then there's a written ballot. Now that's different from a s- secret ballot. Secret ballots are not made at a town meeting. Secret ballots are what you do at the election.
That's, that's right.
So the, I, I needed to correct that because I didn't say it that way.
But we can request a written ballot.
Yes, at the beginning of the meetings, right?
Right.
Yes. At the, at the time of the vote. We, there was a vote.
For each semester.
Right, when the, the vote, the, the voice vote is made, then the show of hands. Then that can be requested, that now, that would be valid.
Prior to that, you can ask for the vote, the written vote, prior.
You can't have a written, you can't have a secret ballot vote at an open town meeting except for that, I'll leave question.
You can.
Unless you.
You can have a written one.
Written, and it's not secret ballot.
Yeah, that's not, that's not what I was asking. But a written ballot is just a piece of paper that's a yes and no.
We used to hold that car, we used to have cars, food that you could do.
Right, we'll do the cards too.
Well, yeah, we had the parts last time.
But you pass the cards out to all voters, that way we don't have to.
All right, all the.
Separate non-voters, that's.
All the voters, right, because we have people from other towns, right?
So when you, when you raise your hand, you should grade that ticket that you get, right, at this.
It should, and they're supposed to, yeah.
The other thing that's, that was done not correctly, and uh Corinne was a little upset, well. She is the one that does accounting, not.
Yes, correct, absolutely.
So that, that will be straightened out.
Yes.
Okay, um. Someone wanted to talk about the Huddersfield Road.
I was told that would be discussed tonight, well, that's why I'm here. I was told it would be discussed.
I don't.
Okay, I would like to, if it's.
You can.
I'm here on behalf of my parents, Samantha Barbara Leighton, who have lived in this town for all of their seventy years. And my sister Angela Leighton Robinson moved it up here tonight due to a work meeting that she had. Um. In the past four months, we have had a lot of dispute over the abandoned end that leads up onto the Bean Road, up the Huddersfield Road. Uh, my parents and my sister have been, um, threatened with. Some force to stay off of what is their property. Barricades have been put up. Uh, a lot of my parents' property has been damaged, which legally is too far gone to be able to do anything about. Um, at this point, we would like to request that the town reopen the road to recreational traffic. That is something that has deeply saddened us and upset us. Uh, we would like the barricades that were put in place to be removed by the person who's the thing you're doing. And we would like to make sure that code enforcement is on top of the situation that is happening on that piece of property.
Um, I did write a letter to, um. The person, the owner, both that parcel, to move that barricade, I don't know. That he got it out, it probably is not removable at this point, uh, we'll have to wait till spring. Um. And at that point, I'll send the CEO up to check it out. Um, he has been in contact with the CEO for building permits. Um, I know that for a fact, and that will have to be. Uh.
Isn't there still a roadway?
That is uh a, yes.
So isn't it, shouldn't it, if I want to ride my horse.
Yep.
From Huddersfield Road to the Bean Road through the woods.
Yep.
Why should I have to, uh, come, come, run across a barricade?
You shouldn't. He's been, he's also, he's also threatening people with dogs if they lock up and then, so.
And more, and more people has been contacted, however, I was never, I was never given the courtesy of a return contact from animal control. I contacted several towns, um, Boeing addresses, and I cannot find a legal registration for the animals. So I do not know who they belong to. Or if they are in fact dangerous, I just.
Talking about dogs?
Yes. So.
Okay, I'll check that.
I'm the eighth generation of my family that live in Mount Vernon. And I've been gone for a while, I just came back a few years ago, and I'm just heartened by the amount of. Trails in the woods and old roads that have been blockaded and barricaded. I've been chased by, by vicious dog and, and on private property where I've had permission to ride, and this just, this just seems. And this just, thi- this just seems to be happening more and more, it seems to me. People from out of town or out of state or out of, on, not on this planet are buying up parcels of land in Mount Vernon. And fancy them off and saying, no, you can't come here anymore. I just wanna ride my horse down the road or be able to walk through the woods. On a road that used to be a town right of way, not run across a vicious dog or barricade or. Someone swearing at me, throwing F bombs at me, I'm just trying to walk through the woods. And this is a, a problem I've encountered. And I'm really horrified over it, because it wasn't the Mount Vernon that I remember.
My parents and my sister own part of that road, and right now they do not feel safe or allowed. To walk on their half or even that side of the property.
I was viciously attacked, my, on, and my horse on private property where I had permission.
I am so sorry that happened.
You should have shot the dog.
If I had, if, if I could have foreseen the future, I would have carried a fire around.
I plan on walking that road bigly as soon as the weather turns, and I plan on being able to defend myself.
I would.
Do cars have the ACL?
Yes, I did. And so I do not know.
If he went.
Took whom the dogs belong, if they were visited, if the dogs were there, when who visited, I know there's some separate property in another town involved, so I don't know.
So it's an abandoned road, and it's belongs to the people on both sides of the road.
There's a, tha- that's the one thing you gotta look into on some of those older roads that you used to. Once the sta- the town stopped maintaining them, the, the roads in Mount Vernon are convoluted, in Maine in general, are convoluted and. Very, very complicated in the way that the law dictates when these settlement things happen. And right, right of ways are very complicated, and, and a lot of it goes back to. When the town actually stopped doing anything to it, so you could find a record when the town, but at thirty years. The town gives up the road because people have rights, and then the property of that road. Even if it's not in the deed, goes back to the center line of the road from the historical boundary, and.
Either side.
Then the town, the town, the town loses the.
I own property on, it's an abandoned road right down the street here, on, I can't remember the name of the, that the road originally was. Uh, and according to my deed, I own, my, I share. I own, right away goes from the middle of the road to my, right, and I share the right way. Uh, however, I have no intention of stopping anybody from. Walk, you know, traveling that.
But you have, you can have the right, yeah.
And so this, this, this road, the, the niece's parents own and her sister own, um. Has been in their family for generations.
Yeah.
And they, they probably were there, and there's nothing on the other side of the road, it's all wooded acreage. So there was nothing there, so they maintained this road for all these years, they probably, if they filed it in court, would. Would be able to maybe come up with a whole right of way of the road, but. That's not the way it's written right now, and they would have to fight that in court, and I'm sure it's expensive and it's.
It does cost a lot of money, my parents have had to retain a lawyer. In their retirement years to try to defend their property rights, which is very upsetting. Um, what is the town's regulation on? Property tax payment and then town foreclosure on a property?
Well, I don't know, it's. If you, I don't know, I don't know, I have no idea.
You mean how, how, how long you have to fall on pain?
Yeah, you have to be like three years behind before.
You get to process.
Yeah, it's like eighteen months, and then you gotta wait another answer process, it takes like three, I hope that.
I don't think that's, I don't think he's even close to that.
Putting hairs from the tape.
Yeah.
I'll do some more checking into it and see what I can do. But, yeah, the barricade has to go, and as soon as spring comes in, well.
You have to stay boosted.
Sure.
Probably after, if there's.
With the dogs, I don't know.
If there's physical threatening escape.
Well, you're a predator, you gotta have some awareness, yeah.
Yes, yes.
He said, she's a, it's. And I think he uses cameras.
Carol Layton was my aunt, was my Jeff.
Is it a fire hazard to have a, a, a road barricaded in, in case there's.
But it's not really a road. I know, it's discontinued, so it's.
There's a road at one time.
I know, if you don't, I, I would do this with my property just to make sure I knew, but hopefully because I, whatever, and. There's all kinds of sequence of events, and the, the key to it all is that the town has major and minor roads. And the town has seasonal roads, and if it's not in the land ordinance, and the town doesn't do anything with it for like a period of thirty years. And it has to be recorded that we did something to the day. Move a pile of dirt or whatever, otherwise the town gives it up, whether they want to or not. And that might be something that a road committee should do, is like, hey, are we willing or unwilling, so there's like, there's like four or five ways that the town can. Give up roads or be forced to give up roads. But one way that they don't even know about it is by not touching roads for thirty years and the forest eats them up, and then they go back to the abundant property owners unless it's a land like ours.
But it's not a road anymore.
Yeah, I, we can't even drive it up it right now.
Like ride a horse up it.
Well, I think what's, what's bigger about this issue is the attitude change. That, that seems to be happening.
Yes.
I know when we moved here forty years ago, um. A- as long as you were reasonably friendly and. Yeah, you know, an outdoors person, you, everybody let you do whatever, how you wanted to do. Unless the questions were your barricades, I wouldn't give a shot, but then. Uh, but I mean, it was, may, may was like that, I, I remember fifty years ago camping up. And having a guy say, put your ten on my lawn. Uh, you know, and, and, you know, things have changed, I don't know why people would do this unless they're doing something else. And, and, and I think it really bothers the hell out of me.
Bother the hell out of me too.
Yeah, I mean, we have property, and we let people on all, all the time, all you have to do is help you drunk, and, you know. Don't piss me off. But, but I'm, I'm really kind of intrigued about why the attitudes are changing.
If, may I say something? If this has been established as not being a road anymore. And it's reverted back to the center line for both property owners. Then isn't it simply a, a, an issue of establishing your boundaries, your, your property boundary, and then. You can take whatever steps you need by permission only or whatever on the appropriate side of your property. And if you allow somebody to come onto your property, that part of your property. Then isn't that strictly to do with the landowner and not a disputed road, because there is no such thing?
Well, yeah. Yeah, a lot of it is, it's between. Proprieties right here, then they seal. You know, an animal control thing, and they cut barricades.
The other part of it is too, that, that a lot of the deeds in town are quick land deeds. And there are plus and minus. So when you, you know, when you buy a property here, most of the deeds are quick land, so if you say forty five plus or minus acres. And everybody could sort of provide it like that.
And then a lot of them say, reference some old stone wall, and they may not be there anymore, and it's, and. Couple feet.
I mean, they got one, twenty five acres plus or minus, it's really good.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, and so I, I, what you would have to do is be quiet. What you would have to do is get a surveyor and.
Exactly.
And, and survey it, and people that are running the money, and.
Thing is, so when I bought my property, not she was bored, I mean, it was, it was divided.
Yep.
And there was a boundary line that had never been, been located between me and this other property owner.
Right.
So I went to, and for the expense myself to have that line. Um, marked, pinned wherever after GPS, and there it is, um. But isn't that on the property owner to do that? If they really want to find that definition, when?
Uh, well, I would, I would assume that, you know, a lot of people don't do it because they have, because nobody needed to do it. Um, we don't have to replace, you know, your neighbors, if you have a hundred acres or sixty acres, whatever, oh, yeah, I mean, but you have. So you get along, you let you on yours, and you let him on his, and there's no.
Do you also have the, uh, noise ordinance on that? You mean? And where did that extend, is that just in the road district, or is it everywhere? I don't think it would happen here. It's not a force, so.
Carry on the ball at night, I would be running the chainsaw just so they can't sleep. Or run the tractor.
There's a decimal.
optional views or.
There's a decimal definition and.
Back over, yeah. I thought it was like a half an hour after, so I said to a half an hour.
Or success.
Will bury anybody who's a senior.
There's, there's an actual decimal amount within that, and the. Piece of equipment they use to, to measure it, you have to catch it. And it has to be a decimal amount for so long, extended period, because I know the file processor that David Arnold had did not. Further up.
And this, this one's, the business kills it more quickly.
But the sheriff wanted to enforce that. That's a, the ordinance, um, it's not a state law. Well, that's kind of hard with him being so far away.
Yeah.
That would be ever. Able to enforce, I know.
They have a tough situation.
This sounds like somebody wants to be obstinate.
Um, anybody else have anything?
Is this for the next one, or do we need to, no?
That's what.
Checks the volunteers, is it all?
Yeah, they can send that out, so you can make a check out, this payroll.
Okay, so can wait.
Yeah.
Well, how can we get a road committed started?
I will put the, something on the next newsletter.
Okay.
But.
Uh, I just have a quick, if anyone has anything, I just have a quick thing, which is just, we got a nice email. Thinking the plow drivers, especially wings mills road, so I said, I just do a little thank you in the meeting, thank you to person plowing wings smells red. And thank you to the person who sent a nice email compliment.
Always nice to have that happen.
Does Kyle have any?
Carl, anything else from you?
No, I have nothing.
All right, thanks Carl, thanks for calling in.
Thank you.
Is Mark here?
Mark is here, yeah.
Ask Mark if there's anything on the, the video.
The, all that's on the video is Carl and.
For, for Alice.
Oh, an update for Alice, oh, Mark, is there an update for Alice regarding the video? And I see you unmuted, Mark, but we can't hear you if you're talking. Um, he says, no update.
I know, he can't get any older ones, he should be able to know ones, so. Probably not, ladies. Anything else? Uh, move that meeting at seven fifty eight.
Second.
Second emotion.
Three zero.
All right. Everyone be safe.
No. No.
Be safe in the storm.
Yes, indeed. And just everybody should know that the town office is closed tomorrow.
Um, oh, Mark is. Bye, everybody.
Bye.